Mr. Bruno.
Here.
Mr. Musto.
Here.
I have a quick notice this meeting has been provided by the following means: Annual board's consent to the Herald and News, of record, South Perry Knight, The Observer, National Guard, Department of Public Safety, the Lavi, the Town Hall, and Board Office sending forthcoming scheduled work meetings and public meetings to the board. Any motion to...
I make a motion.
Mr. Abiscado.
Abstain.
Ms. Alberti. Ms. Alcuri. Mr. Grillo. Ms. Jarvis. Mr. Schwach. Mr. Bruno.
For.
Mr. Musto. We've one announcement to make. The terms of school trustees, Thomas DiMatio, Ronald Broto, and Sherry Jarvis expire. Thus, the three seats, all for three years, will be filled on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2015 general election. Polls will be open from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
We have two certificates this evening. One of our participants cannot be here, but I would like to acknowledge our after we do give out one to our recipient who is here. Ms. Raya Khan, I would ask to come up, please. Raya Khan has done something very exceptional. She started a club in the high school called the International Culture Club. This is the first year that it's running, and she took the initiative of coordinating the club, defining the club, and getting the students involved. And as a result, she's been selected by the Princeton Prize in the Race Relations. And this is recognizing her work that she has done thus far with the International Culture Club. Also, she teaches on Monday evening, so she cannot be with us, but we also want to recognize Ms. Karina Vega. She's one of our staff members, and she's been working with Ms. Khan in working with the students and facilitating their needs for their culture club. So, thank you.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions and leaves the category of the curriculum committee may so indicate now, in a separate motion for each of the accepted items, actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that item's one degree be accepted.
Mr. Abiscado.
For.
Ms. Alberti.
For.
Ms. Alcuri.
For.
Mr. Grillo.
For.
Ms. Jarvis.
For.
Mr. Schwach.
For.
Mr. Bruno.
For.
Mr. Musto.
For.
Education and Curriculum Committee, Ms. Alcuri.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Education and Curriculum Committee may so indicate now, in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained.
If I could just make a comment, it is not a type of under-delayed opening. You will not see community school general education prepaid. We are waiting to confirm those times. You approved this a couple of times, but we wanted to get as much information out to the parent as possible. So, once we touch base with the township on that program, those dates will be inputted, and we'll approve it again.
Hearing none, Mrs. Marinelli has said I make a motion that item's one degree be accepted.
Mr. Abiscado.
For.
Ms. Alberti.
For.
Ms. Alcuri.
For.
Mr. Grillo.
For.
Ms. Jarvis.
For.
Mr. Schwach.
For.
Mr. Bruno.
For.
Mr. Musto.
For.
Community activities and regulations committee, Ms. Jarvis. We'll be right back.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Rules and Regulations Committee may so indicate now, in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that higher than one be approved.
Mr. Abiscado.
For.
Ms. Alberti.
For.
Ms. Alcuri.
For.
Mr. Grillo.
For.
Ms. Jarvis.
For.
Mr. Schwach.
For.
Mr. Bruno.
For.
Mr. Musto.
For.
Can it be resolved that the one whose sort of education was given educational instruction services at high focus centers in Travis County, as we make this a long time out?
Mr. Abiscado.
For.
Ms. Alberti.
For.
Ms. Alcuri.
For.
Mr. Grillo.
For.
Ms. Jarvis.
For.
Mr. Schwach.
For.
Mr. Bruno.
For.
I'll read it. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of New Businesses Committee may so indicate now, in a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I move that one through five be adopted.
Mr. Abiscado.
For.
Ms. Alberti.
For.
Ms. Alcuri.
For.
Mr. Grillo.
For.
Ms. Jarvis.
For.
Mr. Schwach.
For.
Mr. Bruno.
For.
I'd like to, in the superintendent's report, congratulate Luann Boza, who has been selected to serve on the Park Mathematics State Content Item Review Committee, and that will take place in Chicago, Illinois. Also, each of the board members received a handout from the high school administration today for the Option Two program. We've had some discussions, and what we'd like to do moving forward, piloting in the spring, is a program that, as you can see here, is regulated by state code and allowable. There's quite a number of districts who do utilize programs like this in their high school. And what would happen is, during a student's athletic season, they would be placed in, we don't want to use the term study hall because it would be organized, they would have a time where the time that they're spending after school in their organized athletic activity and putting so much time and dedication onto the field, they then can have those 80 minutes every other day where they ordinarily would have their physical education class, they would be able to utilize that time for their studies. That they cannot have that time after school due to the traveling and the requirements that they need to fulfill for their program. It's something that I am confident that the high school administration feels strongly enough about to make sure it is monitored correctly, because those are some of the conversations that we've had. We don't want it to be, they enter a study hall and it's forgotten about. It would be something that is structured and organized, and I think that's identified by the package that was put together, namely that final sheet that talks about the process to be part of the Option Two program and also what goes in law and ethics.
I get a question.
Please.
We're into the spring now. Is this already organized and implemented and ready to go? Have they started it?
My team feels confident that April 17th, they would be able to have their start date of putting this together.
Okay, because this is done in a lot of districts, but it takes a lot of work.
Right. And that's why we're using the word pilot, because by no means do we want anyone to think that we are going to hit the ground with perfection. It definitely was researched, it was studied, it was put together by folks that either have participated in it, their children have participated in it, or were involved in this in other districts. So, they've come with a wide variety of research and personal experience.
Do they feel that by April 17th, they'll be ready to go?
Right. And again, with probably some case that we're going to have to work through and iron out, but with the confidence that we can, you know, correct those and move forward.
Are we going to follow this through?
Right. And that's why we're calling it a pilot. They're going to meet with each other. And Mr. DeMarco and I already meet, we try to meet twice a month. Now with CUSAC, sometimes it's once a month, and touching base via telephone.
It's a great thing, as long as it's, you know, you follow up on it and...
And again, that's why we're utilizing the word pilot. There's going to be multiple meetings throughout, and definitely a meeting at the end to assess how we did, do we want to move forward, do we want to cease and desist?
What other question? It's not over to ninth graders?
No.
Is there a reason why?
I believe the reason why is because the amount of time that's needed in the after-school hours with the sports, because on the freshman teams, it's a little bit more...
Yeah, but some freshmen play varsity track.
Well, that's something that the team can look at and see moving forward. That's something that they can...
I would like to include the freshmen as well, because I think that they also, they're the ones who have the biggest transition to make from elementary school to high school.
And also, too, I think that a lot, their peer group connection is run through there. So, I really, you know, I could bring that back to the team, but there's a couple of reasons why I believe the freshmen are...
Okay, no problem. I just wanted to make sure that...
And also, if you read in there, obviously, help has to still be taken.
Right.
If it's during that season, drivers there, those are not requirements that people can be able to do.
I only got this about 10 minutes ago, but two questions I have off the bat are, student athletes must have been in application each session of athletic participation, so they have four days, or three and a half?
But this is, right, obviously, obviously, this is the hope for the future when it's a standard, what we're hoping is going to be a standard practice here. They're going to be...
They're still just in an application.
Yes, right. But this will all be run internally. Shauna, Frank, and Laura will get the students together, get the coaches together, get the applications, explain the program to them, because again, it's not something that they're required to do either. Some of them may want to stay in their phys ed classes. Explain it to them and be able to, pardon the expression, but hold their hand through the beginning of the process, this time for the pilot.
The other question is, is any cost incurred as a result of Option Two is a responsibility of parent authority, what costs would be felt?
That's a good question. That's just right from the phone, right?
May I speak?
Yeah, please.
If you continue reading, you can see that the program that we're putting forward would not have any cost incurred. However, there are other implementations where if a student doesn't have actual academic work to do, he or she may be involved in community service or something like that. We're not going that route. We're strictly using it for academic purposes, and you can see that in the last statement there, that we have no cost incurred in our implementation of the program.
I've got a, the only thing I would say right now is, having been handed this 10 minutes before the meeting, it's kind of tough to go on it tonight. It's up to the board, if somebody wants to...
I've seen this a million times, and a lot of schools do it, and they've done it for years and years. And one of the main reasons was that it helped academically, and also it helped as far as injuries went, so they're not in phys ed killing themselves, because usually the kids that are in phys ed are the ones that are running into the bleachers and everything else during the season. So, like your star sprinter, break an ankle, and it always worked out well. I think if Shauna thinks that they could get it up and running by the 17th, and this is only a trial, correct?
The whole idea was to be able to pilot this now in order that we had our data for moving forward next year, and we move in a more controlled fashion.
And really, and just quickly, I appreciate and understand what Mr. Musto's saying, but this by all means wasn't developed that quickly, and it came as a result of meetings that Mewell were involved in at the end of last year with the selection of a new supervisor athletics and discussing with him wanting something like this. And in turn, Ms. DeMarco's been doing a lot of work in researching and getting it together. So, some folks have just seen this, but others have been involved for quite some time.
So, the feedback has been pretty much positive when these other communities have been involved.
Yes. And again, as Mr. Bruno and I said before, as long as they're monitored correctly, because the last thing we want to see this is, you know, the expression that was used before, they're being thrown in a study hall. That's not the purpose. The purpose is to make sure that they are given ample time to perform on their studies, you know.
Mr. Marco, is there going to be any closing here? Because I really did hear you talk about if a child, if a student does, like, quit the sport?
It's only active as long as the student has full participation in their sport. However, the one thing I do want to point out is that we do have times when an athlete becomes injured and they're unable to participate in the sport, but the athlete continues to be part of the team, attending the practices, attending the events, et cetera. In that case, if they're removed from the team due to injury, they would still remain in the Option Two program because they're still utilizing that time after school to participate, and they wouldn't be well enough to take phys ed anyway.
All right. But even if you're, like, suppose a kid legitimately, like, quits the sport, then they go back and...
They're ordered immediately removed from the team.
Is that in there?
It's only effective as long as there is active participation in the sport. Great question. Thank you.
I think it's an aggressive timeframe, but I think we can do it.
I make a motion that...
I second it. It's a great program.
Accept Option Two. So, what I could do is, we vote on the superintendent's report, so when I'm finished with all of it, we can take the vote, and we'll make it number four in the superintendent's report. I also did want to mention that the grade four through eight weekend workshop took place this weekend. I have to say that the principals did a fabulous job putting together the schedule. The teachers did a great job planning their lessons, getting everyone in. It was a much smaller group. This time, you know, obviously with the opting out of the park is a different scenario, but everything seemed to be running extremely smoothly. Everyone got in quickly, everyone was on task the time that I was there, and I can't thank the four to eight grade principals and the teachers involved enough for all of their work with the program. So, that was the start of this. And I'd like to end the superintendent's report with a moment of silence for the passing of Mr. Marvin Sandler, who was just a superb human being and a wonderful former high school teacher and supervisor at Lenner's High School. Thank you.
May I add just one thing? I went to the poetry slam at Lenner's High School. It was three weeks ago last Friday, and I had the extreme pleasure of hearing many of the students who are enrolled in this class perform their poetry. It was, it was an absolutely magnificent, magnificent afternoon. We had guests there. Mr. Grillo's daughter, Gia, who's a published poet, was one, was there. And they had a panel of judges, which were staff members at Lenner's High School. I want to thank them for a job well done, as well as the supervisor of Language Arts 612, Mrs. Klein. Thank you.
What's that? Oh, yeah. We're going to talk about it. Yeah, I just, I wasn't here, so I don't know. This came before me with the uniforms and the colors and the whole, because we spoke about it last time. And someone, I didn't even know Land's End was involved in this thing, but I understand Land's End is involved somehow. And the shirt that they offer, and I don't want to get involved and make this a long thing, but they offer cobalt blue. We're not cobalt blue, we are royal blue. And I think we have someone in town that handles this and is, keeps competitive all the way. I don't know why anyone would go to Land's End. I've dealt with them. You've got to go through mail, and if you don't like it, you've got to send it back and a whole nine yards. Where other cases, we can just deal with our people in town and keep the business in town and help our businesses as much as we can in town, because it's a very tough economy and these big companies, you know, and when you go to the smaller companies and you go and ask for an ad in the brochure or the booster program, they're there, and there's their name. I don't see anything for Land's End, okay? And I just, I wasn't here, so I don't know where it came from, but I would suggest that anyone getting their uniforms, if you want to leave Land's End in the mix, fine, but anyone getting your uniforms, I would say the prices are more than competitive, if not below Land's End. Land's End don't have our royal blue. I'm a stickler for royal, royal blue, and I'm a stickler for staying in town with our businesses. I said my piece.
Second. Whatever you're not on, I'm second.
We need on, in the superintendent's report, I, we need, right, but we also need to confirm whatever the colors are, because we bet it at standstill now. So, is everybody going to be royal slash cobalt? Are we doing the...
No. It's royal, blue, and gold.
That's it.
We're doing navy, too? This is, I, everybody doesn't...
Well, we're doing navy for the people that have it, okay? Okay? And they're...
You've got 2,400 kids out there that have all the same colors.
Huh?
You've got 2,400 kids that have all the same, all navy blue. So, when you change, kids are going to feel awkward coming to school in the navy blue. So, you're going to curve...
No, I said their grandfather, their grandfathered in.
Yes, I understand they're grandfathered in. So, they're grandfathered in, but they need to assimilate to the other kids that are in school. So, Dave comes in one day with the new style, and I don't have the new style, so I'm going to have to run home to my parents and say, hey, I want the new style. And now they have to go with my old shirts.
I don't know if it works like that, but...
I think it does. But we can discuss that later.
And we have, yeah, and we have to remember, too, that the vendors have stocked with the navy blue, so we can expect them to...
So, what you're saying is that you'll never, you'll never royal blue into the elementary?
I'm saying we should think about where, how we want to do that and how we want to... Instead of switching over immediately to all the different shirts being worn.
No, except everyone who's grandfathered, when they need new shirts, when they didn't fit, or they were old, or they were worn out, and they wanted to transition...
There's also a program in town where kids that, or families that can't afford it, take the ones that are passed down. So, again, they're all going to be...
And they'll be grandfathered?
Yeah, you're missing the point. That's okay, we can talk about it another time. I think you're missing the entire point of what I'm trying to say.
Oh, I didn't miss it at all. I'm right here.
Does anyone else, I mean, just because we need to move forward with this, so if we could get, I'd love to have it on the superintendent's report, so we can vote, and we can get the advertisements out and get the...
I'm on my way to do it, right? I guess we can discuss it on our...
So, if everyone could think of the royals versus the navy and the vendors, because I just need to know how to move forward with this. I have both vendors in hold right now, as well as the clothing with the colors. So, we could be prepared to talk about it at the next meeting. That would be fantastic. We need to vote on superintendent's.
Any motion for superintendent's report number one through four?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Abiscado.
For.
Ms. Alberti.
For.
Ms. Alcuri.
For.
Mr. Grillo.
For.
Ms. Jarvis.
For.
Mr. Schwach.
For.
Mr. Bruno.
For.
Mr. Musto.
For.
I need a motion to go into executive session.
All right. There was good discussion, and I believe we've come to an agreement, correct?
Yep.
After about three rounds... Just kidding. We're going to, we're going to allow the high school to change their colors and keep the king or pre king for eight.
Change colors to their white colors.
Yes.
Navy blue doesn't show the dirt.
Personnel, Mr. Grillo.
Okay, we have a little bit of a situation here, but we'll get through it. Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of personnel may so indicate now, in a separate motion for each of the accepted action will be entertained. I have a seven and 13. We have to keep them on the side, okay? We're doing one to six and eight, twelve and fourteen.
No, 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 seven.
Okay, seven, seven and thirteen to the second.
Second.
Okay, this is for, again...
You're going to vote on one to six, eight to twelve, and fourteen. Go call. Mr. Abiscado.
For.
Ms. Alberti.
For.
Ms. Alcuri.
For.
Mr. Grillo.
For.
Ms. Jarvis.
For.
Mr. Schwach.
For.
Mr. Bruno.
For.
Mr. Musto.
And now for number seven.
Mr. Abiscado.
For.
Ms. Alberti.
Ms. Alcuri.
Mr. Grillo.
For.
Ms. Jarvis.
For.
Mr. Schwach.
For.
Mr. Bruno.
For.
Mr. Musto.
Now I need a motion for thirteen. I mean, I make a motion.
Mr. Abiscado.
For.
Ms. Alberti.
For.
Ms. Alcuri.
For.
Mr. Grillo.
For.
Ms. Jarvis.
For.
Mr. Schwach.
For.
Mr. Bruno.
Abstain.
Mr. Musto. Motion through it, Jerry? Flute flag.
Flute flag, consider the flag of the United States of America, and consider the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remind everybody, this is only a work session. So, we're going to go right in and... We have one announcement for November 3rd, 2015 general election. Tom DiMatio, Ronald Broto, and Sherry Jarvis, their terms on the board will expire. So, it will be open for the election. Finance committee, Mr. Flut.
Yes. Eddie Beber, who takes exception to any of the...
This is important. So, just have a flag here.
Education and Curriculum.
Anybody have any questions about one, two, or three?
If I could just concede permission on number three. We have an Ed curriculum meeting, is that yesterday? It seems like a week ago now. Yesterday. And there had been some concern about the delayed opening schedule. This year, if you recall, we had changed it so that we came in later, and the end time was the same as the regular day of school. So, Ed curriculum is proposing to the whole board that we extend that even greater and just add two hours. and just add two hours to the regular start time of school. So for example, the four through twelves usually come in at eight, ten. They would come in at ten, ten. So that gives time for our teach, our staff that are out of town enough time to get here, but it gives a nice extended, um, school time for the students to, um, really get a, um, nice education on those shorter days. Okay, so I'll, I'll write that up formally for the, um, public meeting, but that, that's always discussed.
And number one, it's no additional cost because the first year of a club's existence, um, the teacher volunteers and then the second year and from then on, it goes onto the, uh, onto the budget.
It's kinda strange that the first year they'll volunteer, but they won't volunteer after that, wasn't it?
What happened was, that's back from two thousand and ten. We had a cut one point six million dollars from the budget. And, um, Mr. Grillo and Mr. DiMascio were there and they'll recall that there was a very heated until approximately one AM meeting about what to cut. Um, freshman sports were on the table, kindergarten was on the table. And then we looked at club stipends and did away with every single club in the district with the exception of the national recognized, um, honor societies, the FBLA and so on and so forth, and made an agreement with the, uh, teachers' union that if they wanted a club reinstated, that they needed to hand in a packet that was a, um, description of the club, a petition signed by a minimum of twenty students that were interested in the club, volunteer for one year, show that that interest stayed through the duration of that year and then be, um, put on.
And we also changed the, uh, we were gonna change it as a sport, but we just mentioned this two seconds ago, but we actually needed a club instead, and I think that's kind of a sport that we do that-
Right, and, and some of this is going to be worked through negotiations as well because there are some other changes that are being, um, proposed and we're looking to, um, possibly make some student leaders, uh, which, uh, we feel, Shawna and I feel would be great on student resumes when they're applying for scholarships and for colleges to make them more the, the lead of the club.
Trish, did we make any, um-
Changes in the job-
Did we make any changes in that job description for number two?
Yes, so the changes in the job description were that we removed, we added some verbiage because there were questions about, um, the attendance. So we added some verbiage so that everyone reading it understood that that was attendance for, out of district special ed students as well as chronic absenteeism within, um, house special ed students. We also removed the remedial and ESL responsibilities. Okay, so this will need us-
Are we gonna get a copy of, of the change or not?
You didn't? Okay, then you will get it on Monday. Um, and that needs two readings. So that'll be on Monday and then that'll be on again next month. And the committee, which was made up of Shawna DiMarco, who headed the committee, Joe Bastola, um, Jamie Stevens and Peggy, Peggy Ramato and Lisa Klein, met due to Dr. Pfeiffer and me by this Friday. Is there top three candidates and a rationale, um, and rubric for each? And then at that point, I had it due Friday, so that Monday, we could dialogue about how you wanna proceed. Do you wanna see all three based on, um, their recommendations? Obviously, Dr. Pfeiffer and I are gonna interview all three. Do you just want one candidate, you want two? Uh, but we'll talk about that once, uh, Dr. Pfeiffer and I analyze what's handed to us. Um, we'll, we'll speak about that on Monday.
Related ed curriculum, I, I won't be here on Monday, I'll be flying, but I was hoping if, uh, someone could recognize the passing of, uh, Mr. Sandler.
Yeah.
Marvin Sandler, who taught here for over thirty years, I think. My mother had him, I had him and he was an excellent, excellent, excellent.
He's just an excellent human being.
We all, he was, yeah.
But he was an outstanding, uh, math teacher and I had him for, uh, Algebra I and then Advanced Math at the end and, uh, if it wasn't for him, I don't think I would've made it to college. If someone could just recognize him, I appreciate that.
We also talked, do you wanna talk a, a little bit about other things? We talked about with the STEAM program in grade three. Do you want me to talk about it?
Yes, that's my notes.
Okay, so we also talked about, um, a proposal that was moved forward by, uh, one of our third grade teachers to take on teaching all of, uh, the science and, um, working in some STEAM, which is now STEM is already outdated, they've added the arts to it. So when you hear me talking about STEAM, uh, that, that's what we're referring to. Um, so she would be doing some STEAM activities during the day and altering her schedule to take on a zero period so that any third grader that, um, makes a certain percentage on the rubric would be afforded a, um, gifted and talented STEAM program prior to the school day starting. So that's something we're excited to offer as well as a robotics club that we're gonna pilot for one week, the end of this year. It's gonna be the first week in June. I want to do it, um, after testing was over. It's free to us, um, and it's something I'd like to incorporate a little bit more next year. But we're gonna offer it to grades six and seven, the first twenty that apply. And it's going to take place in the high school library and media center because they have to use the computers to actually program the, uh, robots and then the tables on the library side to interact with them. If anybody wants to look it up on YouTube, it's called the NAO, N-A-O. Um, and if you'd like, I can also do a presentation for you on them, um, at a board meeting. I could borrow the robot and I could, um, show you some of the, the, um, things that take place with that.
Well, I'd like to see the board take a look at it, see if we can, I think that would be pretty-
Yeah, so actually, we could, we could, um, if you wanna have one of our work sessions, um, at one of those, the schools, we could actually do Jefferson School because it's handicapped accessible. And then we can take, um, anyone on the elevator up to the science lab to see it. So if we wanna do one of the, one of the, uh, meetings there, we could. Do you wanna?
There's another program, uh, excuse me, I spoke to David about it. My son is involved in a civil air patrol in Tijuana Airport. It's from twelve to, to infinity, actually, but for the programs, it's from, uh, twelve to twenty-one. And there's a program with the, this is a, it's actually, this is like junior ROTC for the Air Force, it's an Air Force run program. But there's a program through the United States Air Force Association that I'm a member of, and there is for the children, a program called Cyber Patriot. And, uh, cyber, uh, defense is one of the, um, biggest, uh, weaknesses in our national defense and the government is starting to try to get it into the educational system as much cyber training as possible. So they have this program called Cyber Patriot. And I had asked, uh, David if there were any of our labs that had, um, IBM PC compatible computers because we can't use that stuff. They said that there was in, in Rosetta. What I would like in this position for, so if you're gonna pick up a computer, that for, uh, for, for possibly the squadron at Tijuana Airport and maybe some with, um, some around the, the little school district to run the program here, if we could.
We also have them at the high school.
It starts, oh, that'd be great because it starts in April. We would need access at least, uh, probably a few times a month for a year. It begins in April and then to March.
Could you give me more information?
I'd be sure I'll give you information.
Okay.
And, um, we would have a, a team of about five or six kids out of the squadron. They'll, uh, they'll be high school level and, um, what did I say? It's, it's just a, it's a tremendous, uh, program and opportunity, I think, for kids from Lynnhurst to see what's, what's going on outside of the school district. That's not sports related as well. So this is, uh, myself, I was like, he's already fallen off the wings and what?
Oh, wow.
He's up for a quieter trip. So I was just gonna mention that, uh, Susan, you went to the poetry slam? How did that go?
Oh, my gosh. It was, it was magnificent to hear what our kids are capable of putting and communicating. And I was so moved by some of them, it brought me tears. And we had Gia, Gia Grillo as one of our readers. It was, it was very moving. It was a moving experience. And I must tell you that I hope to go again next year and I wish more people, if they're available, would come. We have many talented children in this, in our school system and we want to recognize them. Copy of the poetry slam, I did leave home, but-
I could get copies for all the board members.
It was, it was, it was wonderful.
Was it taped or not?
Yes.
Can we share clips or anything?
As a matter of fact-
I'm trying to put it, I'm trying to put it on, there's something going on with YouTube. So I've been trying to do it the last three days.
Patrick, um, started a YouTube channel, uh, for us, which I'm gonna be forwarding the address to, um, all of you so that, we did a great presentation. I had four fabulous faculty presentations at the la- at the last parent academy. Um, and he was able to show how he put, um, there's board meetings on there, there's, the plays are on there, um, coming attractions to our plays, the poetry slam, anything that's taped internally. So we're piloting it right now. You all will be the first to get the address to it and then we'll see how live we're gonna, going to take it. But, um, it's better than hosting on our site because there's no, um, limit, there's no restriction as far as the, the time that, that takes up and it's easier to just upload all right to there. So that's something, um, really exciting.
We don't have a town channel. We don't get-
We're hooked into that.
Uh, you mean, I think we probably can start. Through bios, you mean?
Yeah.
I think if you just make some contacts with them because they, they die for, uh, material.
It's all we call it, is to, uh-
Basketball.
Play one night, a basketball game, dodgeball game.
And then actually the, the machines, as soon as you turn your TV on, they go to that bios bunch. If you talk to them, they'll, uh, they'll answer.
Another thing I'd like to com- compliment, uh, Ms. Mrs. Klein, as the supervisor of the charts for orchestrating this, Mrs. Past- Pastor, uh, Mr. Schneider and, uh, Mr. Belmont. So thank you.
Real, real love.
She goes on.
He actually goes on.
Yeah. We also did a lot of talking at ed curriculum about the changes to the PSAT. Um, there's going to be a presentation, we're gonna actually have two ed curriculum meetings next month. Um, and one is going to be just about the SAT, it's changing back to the sixteen hundred point assessment. It's going to be aligned to the PAR, so the, the whole philosophy of the assessment is changing. Um, it will be computer based. Uh, some, something really exciting that we spoke about is that they are merging with Khan Academy that's looking to level the playing field and offer free, um, courses and, um, and remediation and help for all students. And we often, we offer the Princeton Review currently. Um, and what ed curriculum had talked about was giving the high school the ability and this would have to go through finance and if we could, um, you know, talk about it for next year possibly, is offering a one hundred dollar give back to any student who attends all of the Princeton Review, um, classes. We have six students enrolled currently, which is a high enrollment for us because even with the reduced rate, um, it's costly. Um, the feedback is, it's costly for the families. So, um, the research has proven that your scores increase based on your attendance in those workshops. So what we had thought was, we tossed around different ideas and came to the compromise that for one hundred percent attendance, maybe the board could give the family back one hundred dollars of, of what they had paid for the course.
How much is it?
It's, uh, five fif- four fifty. Four fifty. So if that's something we can talk about for next year. Now again, this is something that would only be a one or two year because the new SAT is, is, um, expected to be out in two years. And the Princeton Review's sole purpose is to teach strategy. The new assessment is not strategy based, it's content based. So I'm not quite sure, um, how much longer Princeton Review will, will be around unless they change their strategy, no one intended. Um, but that would be something maybe for the next two years we could look into.
Tracy, you may wanna mention about the leveling of grades three, four and five.
Yes, so we're going to be having, um, April thirtieth is our next ed curriculum meeting and that's where we're gonna be focusing on the SAT. And ed curriculum doesn't know this yet, but I checked some dates and we're looking at the beginning of, um, April. I thought maybe we could couple it up with our work meeting because I know it's, uh, the evenings are easier for Mr. Abroschado, so if we can meet prior, um, prior to this, I'm sorry, for the SAT. April thirtieth, I'd like to discuss the leveling. Um, we need to have a, a professional agree to disagree conversation about leveling. There seems to be a great deal of conflict in the ideas of the board and the administration as a whole as to where to start leveling. Um, so we want everybody involved in that conversation so that all of the members of the ed curriculum committee, as well as the members of the administrative team, can have an honest conversation about what the research shows and what personal opinions are as to when, um, we should start leveling and why, and hopefully come to a consensus or at the very least a compromise at the end of that meeting. And that would take place during the day on, um, April thirtieth.
As long as it's not because parents are upset that their child wasn't in one class or another, um, behind whatever you're gonna do.
Well, didn't we say we were gonna, we were going to level years ago?
We are leveling currently grades four through eight.
Okay, so we're just more or less following through on the program.
Right, and some folks are requesting to level down to three, which I, I believe there was a miscommunication between leveling and departmentalizing. So, but the, the administrators are suggesting we don't level until sixth grade. So we really need to have this conversation. I don't wanna speak for any party. Um, I want everyone to be able to come together with the proper data, with the proper research and have those conversations so that everyone can understand where each side of the, um, debate are coming from and, and like I said, hopefully come up with a compromise at the very least.
Do you wanna do this April thirtieth?
April thirtieth. If you want us to change the time.
Let's see, during the day, right?
That was our regularly scheduled meeting at eleven o'clock.
That's fine.
I thought it was easier to get two people here in the evening than it would be to get six, so that's why we did the SAT at night and missed order the day.
Right. I remember later, nobody said, we talked a few weeks ago about, um, doing something online so we know when it's for the-
I did it already, it's been off for two months.
Have, for the address for-
Oh, A D D, yeah. Yeah, it's up. Log on right now, lindherschools.net.
Because it was a big thing after the break just now.
No, no, I got that off the next day. If you do lindherschools.net and right here under shortcuts, it says today is A, either A.
She doesn't know how to spell lind-
Today is A.
It's a Y than you.
And A is gold and B is blue.
But Linda knows this.
Yeah, yeah.
Long Island.
Right on the, uh, left-hand side, under shortcuts, today is A.
Got one of those slow phones. It's called a Grillo phone, so where is it, I'm sorry?
Right on the left-hand side, under shortcuts, is a big gold A.
Oh, okay, beautiful. So that's, uh, today is literally, so as soon as, uh, midnight comes, it switches back and forth and then switches. And that's, um, that's, um.
My technology time.
Beautiful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm just, I'm about to, I'm very happy. I may have to, uh, just leave it there.
Please don't forget to check the website for the, um, the postcards. They, we post them up there, there's copies in each of the schools, they're still going out and about to the community, so we get some great information. The results of the communication survey are on there. Our second survey is posted. It's about how safe the, the parents feel their students are in relationship to harassment, intimidation and bullying.
So that will be the people coming here in time. All right, rules and regulations?
Any questions?
Okay. We have no issues with Apex donating back to us?
Which has another donation that will be added on for, um, number four will be a donation of twenty-five hundred dollars from, uh, Mr. Danny Lado to the Linder's track.
What kind of piano was that?
It's a Steinway.
Something nice, it was just a-
No.
Beautiful, beautiful.
Yeah?
And the, the woman, the woman also donated the mover to bring it to the high school.
That's even, that's even probably-
If you want it at your house, don't get anything together.
I have one piece in new business.
I don't know, one of his nice.
I have just one piece in new business, um, I'll say it again on, uh, Monday night, but we, uh, members of the township and the board of education went to the New Jersey Sports Exposition Authority last week on Wednesday. And, uh, myself and Commissioner John Montilla spoke about the housing that- And myself and Commissioner John Montillo spoke about the housing that's going up in the Meadowlands area below, east of Boriot Way, and we imposed that housing without any type of infrastructure improvements. We let them know that it's extremely dangerous for students to be walking up, uh, Farnham or Rutherford Avenue, the whole busing down there, and all the costs that are associated with having to safely transport those students up to our schools, and also the additional costs for the actual students coming into our schools.
Chris Allen, thank you for doing that, uh, because we really haven't, as a township, have been impressed with them since the end cap situation exploded. And I don't think anybody has really been pushing it. Maybe they had a few complexes go up and have been approved.
Right.
And it's not since this busing problem where we actually really woke up ourselves and said we have to do something.
What I'll say is that we sat through their testimony of the builder and their lawyer, and they were right on. The lawyer was going point by point, he was, he was perfect. I mean, he had a great presentation early on. Commissioner Montillo and I both got up to speak, and that lawyer came back to close, and he did nothing but stutter for the entire rest of the time. Came right over to us as soon as the, the presentation was over, and with his whole entourage of professionals, and asked what it was they could do to, to, to help our district out, because they realized there was a significant issue and burden that we, we were basically paying for. So if nothing else, can you get them to the table and have a good conversation?
We know the township has been invited for years. I mean, that authority doesn't exist anymore, but to the Meadowlands Commission for their meetings.
We never were, as far as I know.
We never was, but I was invited on behalf of the township from the commission, because the township wasn't sending anybody, because that guy thought it was useless. However, with the Sports and Exhibition Authority now taking over and the township really not taking the lead down the Meadows as they were in the past, maybe the board should look into attending some of these commission meetings on a regular basis, electing a representative, whether it's the president or, or someone else who's available.
No, I think it's great, I think.
So why don't we, someone should reach out to them and really find out.
Yeah, Tommy, these commissions make it very clear they're not that interested in having people at their meetings. They make them, Tommy, during the day, in the morning, where most people are working. It's intentional.
But that's because they're paid, I think. They're paid, and that's why they're there. They're, they're eight to four, nine to five. They don't wanna be there. I, I think it's actually a laziness on their part. I mean, I agree with you that it's them who wants it that way, but I think it's them who wants it that way, because they don't, they don't need to come in and around, so we could elect someone.
To Joe's point, there was probably, I wanna say thirteen or fourteen people in the room. There was probably six of us from the town, six from the, the attorneys. Mr. Croce was there as well for the record, and then the panel sat up. So there were six and six, and then I think there was one other person that came to speak. But it wasn't well attended.
Right, so, but, but you know, you don't, you don't get hurt if, if you don't speak, so kudos, like I said, to you and the entourage who went. But we should make that legal. I'm sure they're gonna have regular meetings with the requests going out to the townships, and then we should request a request for an invitation as well, as a board, for the board.
With, with the former Meadowlands Commission, that property down there, it is square miles worth of property, is zoned, light industry, commercial. So every time there is a housing proposal, there has to be an adjustment to the zoning.
To their zoning.
To their zoning. So they're well aware that that was not the original intent. Now, does the Sports and Exhibition Authority really care? Probably not, because they keep changing their zoning. So it really is a difficult situation, because everything down there is rentals, okay? There is no townhouses, there aren't any condos, there aren't any single-family homes. It is all rentals. No, Avalon is rentals. Everything down there is rentals. And that's a lot of units.
There's eight hundred and sixteen units right now.
That's a tremendous amount of units.
We have more kids than they expected with, uh, EPC, EPCAP, I think, was that a cop? With EPCAP.
And that's where the housing market is going now. All new construction, if you notice, is rentals. You'll see that. Any, any complex is rentals. Condos are no longer fashionable, I guess.
Yeah, rentals are quick and dirty for the contractor. They just build them and they only take one away. Condos are two to one.
So this is gonna be a big problem. But anyway, okay. I know we took, can I see this, Jeff? An unofficial polling at the commissioner's board of ed meeting for the bowling. And we said that we would vote on it.
Monday.
Mon- okay, it's gonna be on there for us to vote on it.
We can raise a motion, and we can vote, or we can have it put on, but I think that was more procedurally than we're gonna get that done, right?
Any, any, um, any sports team, and right now I believe there's only two or three sports that can win a tournament of champions. The board wants to do a five thousand, not to exceed five thousand dollars to purchase rings for, for a team.
This was a policy, right, David?
Only teams that, that, that win the tournament of champions, so that would mean all groups, all, all states. So you're talking about right now, I believe it's boys and girls basketball and bowling.
What about individual sports like wrestling?
No.
Don't they win all, uh...
No. The thing, here, here's how it came up. It came up, and we, we have a team that's done something that no other team in the history of Lynnhurst has ever done. And we didn't make any compensation for helping them at least get jackets or rings or something. So while we were there, after the commissioner's meeting, I took a quick polling if everybody would be amenable to an amount of money that we could give them, so they could get their rings, get their jackets, whatever they wanna use it for. And it was agreed upon that we would give up to five thousand dollars to any team for that purpose, whether it be rings or jackets. Because, I mean, if the track team ever did it, you know, with a hundred and fifty kids, we'd be bankrupt. But up to five thousand dollars, at least those teams, which no other team in the history of Linnhurst has ever done, could now go out and get rings and jackets. And I just thought it was basically pretty poor if the Board of Education didn't recognize their accomplishments. So...
But I was under the impression that it was tournament of champion teams, which is, so right now it only consists of three sports. Correct, or am I incorrect?
Number one in the state, you have to be. That's what we said. Number one in the state.
Right. So there's only three sports that could actually do that.
That's right, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, right.
Oh, Joe's just asking, wrestling, though. You can't do that, like, in individual sports, where they win, like, Donnie Crissol won the state?
No, you have to do it as a team.
So it has to be a team, not an individual?
Right. Well, hey, listen, if we go down there and there's another Donnie Crissol, and he becomes the state champion, we'll buy him a ring.
Yeah, why does it have to be a team? Because if it's a, if it's a one person and they're doing the same accomplishment?
We were just concerned about the three teams that could do it, and, and one of them is track.
So why not, yeah?
So we'll, we'll talk about it on Monday.
No, why don't you just mention it out? That was a good idea.
We've had, um, national, are we keeping it just as sports or?
No, no, we brought up.
Because they have national FBLA champions.
Right, we brought that up. That was brought up. Okay, it's not, it's not exclusive of anyone.
So that would be a procedure, right?
That's right.
It's a policy, really.
Well, I, I didn't know.
No, let's just check, let's just do the order after proper verbiage, and then we'll just make it, um, the verbiage specific.
Tournament of champions and national champions for clubs.
Because we have big teams and a whole nine.
Right, right.
It would have to be policy, though, right? If this is a policy.
It would be a procedure.
It can just be a procedure.
Okay.
All right.
I just wanna acknowledge Luann Boza. She was selected to sit on the Park State Mathematics Content Item Review, which is very prestigious. So she's going to be heading to Chicago to analyze some of the math items that did appear and will appear on Park State.
I think that's it. Your turn.
We have any motion on, you don't...
We don't, don't we need a roll call?
So we're done?
We're done. But we have to go, we have to go on executive session.
Nothing?
Yeah, I have.